We are going to talk about the budget today, and as you know, there are some suggested revisions to the budget. I think there are three major proposals. Let me back up a little bit. This meeting is part of a new budget schedule and a new budget process.
Mention the open meetings law.
Okay, we'll mention the open meetings law, thank you. This meeting is governed by the open meetings law and it is displayed at the back of the room. This meeting comes about because of Resolution A 903 40, which outlined a new process for us to do the budget. I think there are three major suggestions for revisions to the budget, one from the mayor's office, and one from Councilwoman Gayla Barrett and Councilwoman Lamb. I think we've allotted about an hour and a half. I'd like to start with the mayor's, giving an explanation of his suggested changes, maybe a few minutes of questioning, and then they'll go by seniority on the council, John, Carl, Lloyd, Larian, Cindy, and then me asking questions and doing presentations. We'll see how we can manage our time and get through everyone, have a chance to speak and discuss things. And with that, I'll stop talking and ask the mayor's office to start.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I'm Rick Hoppe, Mayor Byler's Chief of Staff. We had talked to you earlier in the week about a change to the mayor's budget that we will be submitting as part of the budget resolution, so it'll officially be part of the mayor's budget. As I explained the evening that I call all of you frantically, some good news occurred. We got some additional claims experience from Aetna, our insurance provider, and typically that claims insurance information, the claims that we were seeing data for, occurred early enough in the budget process that we're able to make adjustments to estimates in previous years prior to this point. But with the new budget process that we're under, the calendar got moved back a little bit. But the news is good. The news was that our claims were so good that we were able to reduce the estimated cost for health insurance across the board from nine percent, which was projected for the 2018-19 budget year, to three percent. Now, that obviously impacted a number of funds. The one that's most obvious in most people's minds is the general fund, simply because it has so many uses and you really need to kind of sort that out. Well, as I indicated to you all on the phone, that money has to go somewhere. We have to offer you a balanced budget. So we chose to put it in what we're calling a street improvement fund, and it will be 1.3 million in the first year and about 1.5 million in the second year. And the idea in the street improvement fund and why we're using a new fund for this money is we wanted to have the most maximum flexibility on where this money would go in the category of streets. In short, whether it was new construction, rehabilitation, residential, arterial, we wanted to leave that fairly broad so that we could have a conversation with all of you in the larger context of what we want to do with streets and put the money into the area we feel was the most priority. So again, this is money for streets, going into street improvement fund. Obviously, we will need some sort of motion to move it to another fund at some point, but after we've had a larger discussion that includes what we've been hearing from the transportation coalition, members of the council, the results of this budget, we can decide then where we want this money to ultimately end up. Again, the mayor's office would like to have it remain in streets. Where it goes after that, in terms of being specific, we'd like to have conversations with all of you. And that's my story, and I'm sticking to it until Brandon tells me I'm wrong.
So, questions so far?
Well, just for clarification then, so your proposing, or the mayor's proposed budget, it would be in that street construction fund, and I know there's been a suggestion that it go elsewhere. So to have it go from what you're proposing elsewhere, then as we get down the road on the budget, I would assume if that were the case and council agrees, then instead of going to this new street construction fund, it would go to that other.
I'm sorry, the street improvement fund that we're talking about? I'm not calling you.
I'm talking about the, because of the reduced health claims, 1.3 for the first year and 1.5 million.
Okay, it's going to the street improvement fund, which is a new fund?
Right, well, that's what you're suggesting, but until the budget is finalized, it could be put into a different source, or.
Well, you all could move it, but understand, this is not an amendment we're asking you to make. This is part of the mayor's budget proposal. We are entitled to change what we submit to you by resolution until 40 days before the end of the budget year. So this will be part of the mayor's budget.
Okay, well, that was clarification. And then, secondly, on this street improvement fund, who would determine what that would be spent on?
Who would determine? Well, us in conjunction with you. You'd have to move the money to another fund, we need council permission.
So to get it out of the street improvement fund, you would need council approval?
Is the attorney nodding yes? I can't see behind me. Yeah, I'm pretty confident that for us to move from one fund to another, we need your approval.
Okay, but, or if you just directly use it to spend on a Street A, could that be done? Or in any event, is it going to have to be moved out of this fund?
Well, yes, theoretically, we could if the description was broad enough to cover that. You're right, we could spin directly out of the fund, but I think we want to have a conversation with you all, and that's the intent here, about where the money is best placed and what the highest priority is.
Okay, well, I guess, and I appreciate that, and I would say let's have.
I'm actually glad you brought that up, because you're right, that has not been clearly stated out of my testimony.
Okay, and I just think as that, the street improvement fund would be created, that one of its requirements would be then however that's spent, that it would come by the council so that we have a say in.
Okay, let me buzz that by the mayor, and we'll talk with the budget office about the best way to draft it.
My second question is, on this street improvement fund, you said keep it broad and so forth. Is this purely streets, or does this include other ancillary mobility options?
I anticipated you would ask this, and if you all would like it to be curb to curb, well, then let's have it be curb to curb. Did I answer the question?
That would be my choice, yes.
Okay.
Just work our way around. Carl, you have any questions at this point?
Yeah, I do, thank you. So, right now, do we have those funds segregated, the street funds segregated?
Well, there's a street construction fund. Okay, I guess I'm not, are you talking about the street funds themselves?
Yes.
Okay, well, there's obviously a street construction fund. I'm hoping the public works people eventually are going to bail me out of this. And as you know, the wheel taxes go into three different pots as well.
Right.
So they all have language which controls how they are spent. And what we're trying to do is to avoid putting them in one spot for one reason until we have a better understanding of what the big picture is and where this could be the most effective based on the other actions that are taken.
So when you say they go into one pot or another, aren't they in the same fund? They're just allocated separately?
Budget or transportation help.
I think what we have in mind is that these would be sort of segregated from what's traditionally street construction, street rehabilitation, and residual, like we separate or segregate wheel tax today. So it would be a designated, sort of a coveted, fund that stands alone until we determine how to spend those dollars. Does that help?
Well, I get that part. It's the fund we have now, doesn't everything go into one pot, but then it's just allocated separately according to wheel tax and so forth?
No, they are separate funds.
Okay, so we have a street construction fund, we have a wheel tax residual, wheel tax new construction, and wheel tax rehab.
Right, and because of the designations for how those dollars are spent, we really don't want to mix this pot of, this type of money with those just yet, until we decide, you know, what the best use is, curb to curb all of that.
Thank you, so there would now be five instead of four?
There's three today, plus highway allocation, there would be fifth, yeah, just fifth one.
Okay.
Just for clarity, you remarked, or you said those so quickly, would you say those five again?
Okay, let's start with wheel tax. New construction, residential rehab, and residual. Those are the flexible dollars that can be used on any street purpose. And then there's a highway allocation, that's our state gas tax. There's a federal, there's a federal allocation to that as well, but that's included.
That's within that, the highway.
So is there.
And then this would be a fifth.
Is there a reason this couldn't go into the residual, which is the flexible fund?
You know, only because of the curb to curb. I think.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I think if you're going to put parameters and restrictions like that, where you want to have a special designation for it, we can decide later and have the flexibility.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gayla Barrett, do you have any questions?
I know that one of the reasons why the health insurance was budgeted as high as it was is because national trends are showing those costs at sort of eight percent level. And so my question has to do with what to expect beyond this biennium. This is, you know, an ongoing money funding stream, but in the next biennium, would you be looking at budgeting again at sort of a higher level for health insurance? And would we not be able to count on this kind of funding level for this particular new fund on an ongoing basis? Can you just explain a little bit what we set our expectations about how this fund would work?
Yeah, I think national trends, and I would agree, is trending to eight percent. So anytime we're approaching the budget, you know, we're typically going to include a higher amount within that health insurance line, just to make sure that we're hitting our trends. And then as we go along through that process, we continue to review it and look at claims that are actually coming in. And then, you know, typically sometime mid-July is when we feel comfortable we're at a point where we can actually set rates for the upcoming year and then determine how that matches up with the budget. So same thing, second year, we've got the 10% in for the second year. You know, that might come in differently during 1920, but based on our current, you know, recent trends, you know, I think we're having a good year this year, but that doesn't mean that we're going to have a good year next year.
So we shouldn't think of, I mean, should we think about this as sort of a two-year pot of money that may or may not kind of appear again at this level?
Well, having it at three percent for the current year not only saves money for the current year, but also the following year.
It's cumulative.
Yeah, so it is cumulative.
Yeah, I mean, beyond year two.
Well, we should have somewhere in that neighborhood going forward this money, because the increases are built on the previous year's increases.
Okay.
So that.
Do labor negotiations at all affect the percentages, or is it just?
They can. I mean, it just depends on the type of benefits that are negotiated within the union contracts.
But not enough to alter this fund if we take it down to three percent?
It could. I mean, I can't say that it won't.
But not likely to do a significant, I mean, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand what might or may not happen.
You know, when the state legislature repeals comparability.
Sure, there could be a law. I worry premiums will go up again soon.
I'm just trying to understand the nature of the funds, how ongoing this funding might be.
So one-time money, or can we?
Well, I mean, you know, it's kind of a, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? I would say that, let's say in year three, there's a 25% increase in the cost of healthcare. Yeah, that money probably disappears unless we're having a really good year in terms of sales tax, or property tax valuation, or another revenue source coming in that would bolster the other funds. But we'd probably end up using the money that we had allotted to cover that cost we had to.
Larian, maybe if I'm understanding it right, we've got the general fund has this money, and initially, the mayor proposed allocating so much of it to the health insurance premiums. Now we're saying, we're not going to do that. The general fund would take these savings, we're just quantifying the savings, put those in the street improvement fund. And so I would think down the biennium from now that if the council and the mayor at that point decide on an allocation out of the general fund to the same street improvement fund, it could. I don't know that it's solely dependent on health insurance savings, although that might be a barometer or a placekeeper, but that makes sense?
Yes.
And there could be other sources or something to go.
Well, I think in that third year of the budget, we'd probably start at around 1.5 million in that fund, and then adjust accordingly, all the funds and all the spending purposes depending upon what our revenue is suggesting.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just a comment. I am very much appreciative of the mayor's willingness to, number one, put this money on roads, and number two, keep it as flexible as possible so we can focus our money where it will do the most good.
Thank you. The other question is, did you have anything else to present at this time?
No, the fence would like to rest. Well, until called upon again.
So, we've heard from the city hall and the mayor's and the mayor's staff. Are there other suggestive proposal changes? And I thought about going around the room. John, do you have any other suggestions to the budget?
Well, I think we've had two put forth by two of our colleagues, and maybe it'd be best to look at those at this point.
I understand.
Since we've got something in writing.
Okay. We talked about going in seniority. Seniority, so Councilwoman Gayla Barrett?
I'm going to pass these out.
Look, she solved my problem. I didn't even need to worry.
Pardon?
I was having trouble getting online. I said, "You solved my problem." I didn't have to worry.
I'm hoping you can think of these as the get-or-done amendments, because they're going to help us get across the finish line on a number of really significant equipment, capital needs that have gone on for too long. I think eighty percent of the proposal really focuses on public safety. We have equipment needs in the fire department that we're all well aware of. Twelve out of the seventeen fire engines and two out of the five fire trucks qualifies that need immediate replacement category. And money from these proposals would help to fund about six engines. We have fire stations that were built before women joined the firefighting ranks, and they have makeshift partitions and communal sleeping dormitories, and floor-to-ceiling cracks and linoleum peeling, and one station even has three bays for, or two bays for three vehicles. So, you know, think about if you had a medical emergency and they had to move a fire engine out of the way so that the ambulance could head out. I mean, they need some updates, not just for the comfort of the people living there, although that's very important, but also to make public emergency response times and public safety improvements, and also to really acknowledge the diversity of today's workforce. The bulk of these items in this proposal are capital improvements funded by one-time money coming out of the cash reserve. By using cash now to pay for these items that are almost entirely listed as potential geo-bonds in the future, we can save taxpayer money by not issuing debt to pay for them. One of the other ways we can save money by doing it this way is by achieving volume discounts in purchasing. If we buy more apparatus at once, or contract for the two-year spend of apparatus, that will help us achieve some volume discounts. The community challenge grant to address capital needs in the Parks Department is a way to try and be innovative in leveraging public dollars to do public good for things that people in our community really care about. Things like the teacher's fountain that needs repair, the old pavilion, items that are falling into that quality-of-life bond category. If we can get some of these done in public-private partnership, the city won't have to spend as much to achieve these, to get these across the finish line, and I think we'll build even more community support and interest in these assets. And I know, I was really just inspired by the efforts we've seen with the Woods Tennis Center improvements, and the, even little Simon Brockmire, who raised money for his neighborhood playground. I mean, people care about our parks, they care about these assets, they want them to be in good repair, and there just isn't enough money to take care of all these. And if we can take some seed money from the city and try and get challenge grants and matching dollars from the public, I think we could get some of these projects done faster and without going out for a geo-bond. The idea is that the money would go sit in a fund in the Parks Foundation, and that the Parks Foundation Director and the Parks and Rec Department Director could work together to identify private partners who could help us get these major projects done. In the police department budget, in the police department aspect of this proposal, acknowledging that those six new officers also need cars to be in. They need cruisers to do their work and to protect the public. This would take care of that equipment need. We heard from Chief Leimeister that one of the top priorities that didn't make it across the finish line in the regular budget process was the body worn camera initiative. This project acknowledges that priority, but is also sensitive to the fact that we can only do so much without creating ongoing costs. So it proposes to fund ten, ten of those body cameras, body worn cameras, and a server to help with video storage, to help continue this initial implementation phase of the body worn camera program, an ability to test and evaluate this as an effective tool, not only to protect officers, but also the public. In addition, we all know that the bridge has been facing risks to its operations, and grateful to the county for approving 100,000 to close their 150,000 dollar gap. This 50,000 dollar ongoing contribution to the bridge would finish, would get that gap closed altogether and help us keep open the civil protective custody unit, which is so important to the police's ability to focus on other, other public safety needs and not have to spend their time in hospital emergency rooms with people who they cannot release until they're picked up by a family member or a friend. Separate from all these one-time improvements funded by cash reserve is an attempt to recognize that the Keno receipts have been steadily increasing in recent years. How many times do we see Katrina Coffey in our meetings? We are benefiting from an increase in those revenues, and acknowledging that and fully appropriating in year one the amount that is budgeted, and then increasing the appropriation in year two by one percent to a four percent growth factor would allow the Parks, Library, and Human Services budgets to get modest increases that really can do a lot for those departments. We heard from Pat Leach that her unmet needs included taking better care of the facilities of the libraries and the need for a superintendent for building facilities, and also restoring the Bennett Martin evening hours, Monday through Thursday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., that were cut in the 2008-2009 budget. This level of funding, modest though it is, 138,600 in year one, would, and 170,940 in year two, would really achieve those goals. The Parks and Rec Keno funds, typically those go to Parks and Rec maintenance, and we know there's a gap there. This 305,000 dollar allocation in year one and 173 in year two would help to close that gap and bring it almost shut in terms of Parks and Rec maintenance. And that'll, that'll really help eat away at the backlog that we see in those projects for just general maintenance of our facilities, and hopefully we won't have to have people like Simon go out and fundraise for their playgrounds with this kind of boost to the Parks Department. So, let's get these things done.
Questions from the council?
Could you describe a little bit more, taking the 4.9 million out of the general fund? I know we were a little concerned when we had the general fund loan money for the streetlight project, and now you're talking about rating it further.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big deal to go to the cash reserve. It's there to protect the city from unforeseen emergencies or, you know, economic downturns. Sales tax funds are obviously volatile year to year, so you have to have a certain amount in the cash reserve, and the finance director takes it very seriously, and so should all of we, all of us. The, there's even a policy that you helped vote to pass back in 2003 that limits the ability to take very much out of the cash reserve at any one time and encourages the paste distribution over time of any, of any cash reserve funds. So, so this proposal is very respectful of the policy, it complies with that policy, and this is about the most I think we could do without, without, yeah, this is the most we can responsibly do, because it is important for our bond rating that we have a certain amount in reserve. We've, we've been steadily growing the cash reserve balance, and I think that reflects the conservative fiscal management of the city. We, you know, as Brandon mentioned, with health insurance, they tend to budget 10% when the national trend is eight, because they want to make sure that we don't come up short. So we tend to overestimate, you know, the expenses and be conservative on revenue estimates, and that leads to a little bit of savings that builds over time and then collects interest. And when we reach a point like we are in the upcoming biennium where we've got a little extra cushion because of that and because of the successful economy, I think it makes sense to invest those dollars in our highest priorities, and especially when we have capital needs. You certainly wouldn't want to use it for ongoing expenses, because it's one-time money.
A couple of comments that I might make. I really think, you know, you said our highest needs. We haven't decided, in your mind, that may be. But, you know, if we're looking at that, I'd rather see us go back to our pension plan, which is an ironclad obligation, and dump 4.9 million in there if you're talking about taking out of the general fund reserve, or the cash reserve. There are a number of other things, or put it in the streets and roads rather than going to the taxpayers asking for a tax increase. I mean, those are some things that have been neglected. Not, and, you know, none of these is not a priority, but one of the failures I've seen over the years is there's, you know, if you, you compete, you take fire against something, I mean, you're taking fire against the city council here. I mean, I can't believe you would suggest taking out of the city council's budget. We've got virtually nothing, and we have no staff, and that's what we're using to try to build some staff. And I think that that's unfair. In fact, that, that, this is the same thing that happened many years ago when Jonathan Cook, at the very last meeting on the budget, made a motion to say, "Let's take all of the city council's discretionary funds." Each council member got 12,000 a year at that point to help with that. And so he said, "I hereby move, we give it to buy radios for the firefighters." It's a no-brainer. How do you vote against the firefighter radios? And if we're going to do something like that, then let's go through the whole budget and weigh every expenditure against others. I think we need to look in the totality, and we're spending, you know, public safety and medical, you know, police and medical is very important. But I think it's unfairly comparing some elements here. As far as buying so many fire apparatus, now you're bunching things up. You mentioned getting economies of scale there. We now leverage to national contracts, thanks to Purchasing Department and Finance, so that we get those savings when we even buy a single unit. And we're already committed to buy some, and once we get rid of Brian, then our units won't rest on the undercarriages anymore, so we'll go longer lives. So granted, the needs are there, but they're not, the fire department's not going to fall down overnight. The quality of life in the parks, you know, we're facing, again, just asking the taxpayers for more. We're looking at some bonds that we're going to need for various other capital improvements. And I think before we go to the taxpayers, we need to internally prioritize here, so I have a real concern on that.
Okay, I hear you, and absolutely this discussion.
Why did you propose the council money?
This, well, let me just take you, you said a lot. This discussion is about priorities, it's important to have it. When I said our most important things, I was talking about public safety in general. It's the number one priority of the city, I think we all agree on that. Roads are absolutely important. I, too, was very pleased that the money from the health insurance savings was put towards that, and to the extent it's ongoing revenue, that is very important, because our streets will continually need repair every year. And, I mean, we're putting, how much, I mean, 60-plus million a year towards roads? 65 million a year towards roads, as we should be, because we have that kind of level of need. I call these the get-or-done amendments, because we also have really important needs in public safety that we could actually get done with 4.9 million. safety that we could actually get done with four point nine million whereas we won't get roads done with that level. I mean, it's a drop in the bucket for roads, but it's, it's, it gets it across the finish line for the police and fire in many ways. So, so that was my thinking about how to prioritize these funds. Pension is certainly a valid use of cash reserve, absolutely. My thought there was that we passed that ordinance to make sure that we're, we're complying with our funding, we're, we're not shorting that, that line item in the budget and we've made good headway there. We wouldn't get the pension done either, but we could get, you know, fire apparatus replacement. The ideal number of purchases in the next two years are seven and five. We could get pretty close to that with this money plus the money that's in the mayor's budget. As for the council staff person, that position has been vacant and unfilled for over a year and there isn't consensus yet on how to staff that position. There's disagreement here about what makes sense and what is feasible and in the past this has been a controversial issue for past councils. It seemed like, and feel free other people to weigh in, it seemed like taking care of the bridge was a higher, a higher and better use of these ongoing revenues and if there's another source of ongoing revenues, I'm open to discussing it, but that's the one that I could see.
If I could add something on, on that, I had talked to Larryan about, about that issue, very concerned about the bridge and, and the, our responsibility there because of the, the changes in terms of interpreting rules and we're just going to have to pay and otherwise, we're really going to pay. And the expenses and, and service to our community are going to, could become a crisis issue. So, so we, the county board has apparently approved a hundred thousand dollars and so then to get to the hundred and fifty thousand that they're losing from the state, it's our responsibility, I think, to look at it for fifty thousand dollars and in terms of priority for me, that would be a higher priority than adding a staff person.
Well, to give you an example of a correct.
I'm going to, Roy's kind of been patiently waiting, so forgive me, John.
I have a question and a comment. Question on this, these, those cash reserve funds, does the administration have a position on spending these funds at all, you know, not necessarily on these things, but spending them?
Well, first of all, Ms. Gaylor Barrett has done her homework, she's worked very closely with the finance department. I would tell you that at some point it probably becomes desirable to take a look at how much money's in there and can it be put to different purposes. I think we'd tell you that while we're always uncomfortable dipping into this because we want to make sure we're fortified against emergency and that we're meeting the requirements, the bond rating agency's to maintain our triple A bond rating, that right with this, we're comfortable. We would tell you that we don't see this as being something we should do again, that we need to maintain a certain level to ensure again those bond ratings and our, and our status as a well-financed city, but we, we would be okay with this and I think I'm, I think Brandon feels very close to the same way. I'll let him speak for himself.
So I think back to two thousand and three, this body set a policy of twenty percent. As of right now, we're sitting right about thirty percent. Rating agencies vary on the amounts that they want for triple A's, it goes from anywhere from fifteen up to thirty. You know, this would draw it down, but I think if we work with the rating agencies to communicate, they typically allow for drawdowns for capital type purposes as long as it's not an ongoing drawdown of, of surplus revenues. So I think from a credit perspective, I don't think we see a negative issue there.
So my comment then on this specific proposal is about the council staff. Now, we set this money aside as part of a grand compromise early in two thousand and seventeen. Everybody was a part of that except for Benny and I don't feel good about backing out of that compromise in any way because once you back out one piece, you open the door to disintegrating the whole thing. And I think the compromise that was made was a good thing and we need to preserve it in entirety because if it has no integrity, it doesn't exist. So I would not be supportive of taking that particular money. I acknowledge the money for the bridge is critical because Carl is right, we can spend a little bit now or spend a whole lot of more money later if civil protective custody is moved over to the jail. That will cost us more than a million a year and we don't want that happening. So I suggest that maybe we just re, look at the numbers and perhaps we, we find that fifty thousand dollars a year somewhere else. That's my only comment on your proposal so far.
John, I'm going to sit in and come back to you.
I'm just going to echo my concerns. We have, it's true, we haven't come to an agreement on a, on what we want for that position except everyone wants some kind of research and I think that we can't, we are close if we look at an attorney position, we have talked in the past about getting an attorney from the city law, but I think we probably need our own attorney. It's clear we don't have staff to do research and my, and what with what we were just told about records retention, I understand that the councilwoman has asked her staff to do a lot more of her filing and I would expect that's probably going to be an ongoing thing. So she can't do the analysis we need anyway and it's like cutting our staff and cutting our ability to get staff at the same time. So, and I am really concerned that, that we would negate the compromise that happened. The comp, we fought hard and had, and went, many of us voted in a way that we had thought we didn't want, we were brought about by the compromise, entered into it and backing out this part is, is troublesome to me. But I have other questions that I don't want to necessarily get into because I think Carl was supposed to go first and I'm not sure John was done.
I'm confident John wasn't done, so let's go back to John.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if we want to get down to fine tuning things.
And we're just having a conversation now.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would start then really going through items in the, in the budget. You know, I'd start with, we don't need a three hundred thousand dollar ambulance, we can get one for two hundred thousand or maybe we go back to the vans that are around a hundred and twenty thousand, which may make some sense. There, you know, it's, there's always this desire to have the, the brightest and shiniest, but, you know, if we're looking at, you know, do we provide the function or do we have to have the big red, big, big fire ambulance, whatever, you know, that. And I just use that as an example, but we can go through, we can look at personnel raises and that may come up anyway. But this city council has labored for so long and to be effective and the time that each of you spends out of your personal schedules, you need somebody there so we can be the professional city council that can represent the citizens of this community. Again, you can compare us, the Omaha City Council has between seven and nine staff people. You know, we used to have two people, we gave that up, we gave phones up, we have given up so much and I think that we're, we're not being selfish in this matter, we're not getting compensation increases or anything. And there was talk the other day about cell phones, shoot, I, I want the staff person first. So I, I, I think that that's a, a low, a really important element and I think that there are other whittling, I'm sorry, whittling's not the right word, there are other cost savings that due to the placeholders in the budget that could be streamlined, just like the health insurance, it turned out that's going to be less. But if, if we want to do that, then let's look at that. I, I truly, you know, I, I respect what Brandon said about the cash reserves, however, we've also added more debt and it was just a couple of years ago when we were given the dire red flag warnings that because of the pension plan, we could be losing our rating. I mean, it was just nip and tuck and so I, I think that having a cushion, I'm not saying we, we can't look at that some, but that is, I, I want to be very careful before we start that snowball down the Matterhorn.
Carl, did you have some questions?
Brandon answered my question.
Well, I appreciate that there are different priorities among council members. I just think that Lincoln is a growing city, we've heard about all these annexations, we've voted on them, we've heard concerns from the public about the ability of, of emergency responders to get to the edge of the city in a timely fashion and right now, the department doesn't have new and shiny, they have nineteen ninety-seven model trucks that we bought from rural fire district in Hickman and that's an example, it's in better shape than a lot of our other vehicles. And, I mean, I don't want one of those breaking down if they have to go out to the edge of the city or anywhere in the city and, and we're at that point, I mean, Kendall Warnock is good at what he does and I think of him in my mind as MacGyver, but I mean, do we really want to have a twenty-first century city with, with one guy MacGyver-ing all of our trucks? I don't think so. I think we want a fleet that is as professional as the people who ride on those trucks and engines and, and as, and to respect, you know, our public and to show them that we're investing in their safety.
Yes. I, we're both nodding to you.
Oh, we're both, everyone's nodding, okay, okay, I do have some questions, thank you. So, first of all, the, the Keno funds that are being diverted, where will they be diverted from? Like where would they naturally go if they weren't going where you're directing them?
So, it's a little, it's a little bit complicated to explain, but Keno comes in and it has predetermined uses, I mean, you can't just take it and put it to roads or something. It, they go to these uses.
What uses?
Parks, maintenance, the library and human services and as you can see, there are certain other designated uses, the state gets some, the, the general fund gets some, the county gets some. These are the numbers that finance gave me, but.
So what are you proposing that's different than that?
The finance department's projecting that Keno will come in at a certain level and they're only appropriating a portion of the projected revenues in year one because they were being conservative. I think given how good the fund has been performing in the last seven years, that we could fully appropriate the Keno projections in year one. So this is an increment above and beyond what the mayor's budget includes for Keno. In year two, I think we could, instead of estimating three percent growth in the Keno revenue, I think we can estimate four percent growth safely and reasonably and that will then create another increment of, of funding for these uses in the second year.
Okay, so am I understanding right then what you're proposing is that, that we increase the number that we're projecting for Keno funds and then put it in these?
Right, I mean, I don't even, I don't get to say where they go, this is just where that, if you increase the revenue, this is where it would have to go in these amounts.
Okay, so what this is really boils down to for Keno funds is just increasing the revenue projection?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you. The second thing is, do you have specific cash reserve funds that you are looking to divert? Or are you just saying in general?
You have to, I backed out the reappropriation dollars because you don't want to touch those, they have uses, anything that has a use, why don't you explain?
I think just in general, you're talking from the general fund balances.
So, but the general fund balance, isn't it in a number of different, because you've sent us cash fund balances and they're assigned, like building and safety has a certain cash fund and so forth?
So there's, from an accounting standpoint, we aggregate up certain funds, but I think this would just specify that it would come straight, strictly from the general fund balance and not, you know, a building and safety or some other fund.
So how would we show that then, what was, what was left in our general fund, I mean, our cash funds? How would that be shown in the monthly reports that we put out that show how much is in each fund?
So this would be a planned drawdown over a two-year period, so as those funds were paid out, then we, the, there would be decreases potentially in the, in the cash.
So wouldn't you have to show the decreases though in specific funds?
No, it only, so you would increase the appropriations in the general fund to basically pay for capital type purposes and then you would increase the balances within the general fund so that you still have a balanced budget overall.
But what, so in order, doesn't our cash fund balance, it has to balance, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so we would be taking them from one of those buckets?
It would come from the general fund bucket, I guess.
Oh, I see.
When you look at that, so if you're looking on the investment report, that's out online, that's looking at cash from a pooled investment perspective, but we still have cash per fund that we track, well, that's ongoingly tracked. So it'd just come out of that one general fund bucket.
Okay, thank you for setting my mind straight on that. So how much does thirty percent versus twenty percent, how much does that ten percent difference actually represent in dollars?
I think somewhere around ten point nine million is what we calculated.
Okay, and are we, or is any of that being used for, or is that, I should say, is that after the recent ESCO we did for the streetlights?
Some of that cash would be used, but also from a credit perspective, that's booked as an investment, so you're still seeing that show up within the fund balance because it's an asset investment to the general fund. So you're just kind of shifting it maybe from cash down to an investment that's longer term. So you're not really seeing that decrease as you would a cash outflow.
So, and, and the reason I'm asking is because, I mean, two years ago, we tried to take some out of the fund balances and like we were told the sky was falling. So have we accumulated that extra ten percent just over the last two years?
I'd have to go back and look, but I believe it was higher than that two years ago. I think it might have depended also on what your intending, the intended use was for the fund balance. You know, generally, fund balance, best practices, you, you fund debt reduction, one-time expenditures that could, especially that could reduce operating expenses, set up reserves for risk management type purposes like putting money away for health insurance, funding outstanding liabilities like pension obligations or other post-employment benefits or just setting it aside for a potential planned drawdown in the future for economic purposes, other things like that.
Thank you.
I was going to, I was going to say, I want to watch the clock so you have plenty of time, do you have?
I do have a couple of questions, more from, but from Larryan, I just wanted to get those taken care of while you, but thank you very much.
Don't want you stealing time from yourself.
Thank you, okay. So I wanted to find out, I, so I had an interest in a couple of things having to do with the police car and the body cams. So is your vision that the body cams would be like a pilot program because we've heard a lot of concerns about the cost of storage?
Yeah, they've been piloting sort of a few cameras at the police department and there's even been a fundraiser, you know, someone held a fundraiser at Wilderness Ridge to buy a few more and this would only contribute ten additional cameras, so, I mean, we're talking just maybe, you know, a few dozen. Chief Leimeister could maybe speak to that and much more expertly than I, but the idea is that it's a small enough number that it won't create ongoing costs. Obviously, a full implementation for the entire department would, would have significant ongoing costs.
Thanks, Chief. So, okay, so there, I understood that there was ongoing costs whatever we're storing. We have to store for a certain period of time.
That is correct and that is why the majority of what is proposed here is the backbone, the infrastructure, which is the server itself.
Oh, I see.
That is, that's ninety thousand of it. The ten body worn cameras, the actual device that is fitted on an officer is a, just a very small percentage and again, we don't want to create this expectation that we can't meet in three years, five years when these require replacement and that's something that we've worked closely about and talked about and ten is a small number in comparison to two hundred and forty, which is full implementation today.
So I'm glad you're up here, thank you, because my other question had to do with the police cars because I think we've spoken before and my understanding is that the police budget has had a line item for replacement of vehicles and new vehicles for about twenty years, haven't they?
That is correct.
Okay, that hasn't changed in this budget, has it?
It has not.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, because I'm wondering why we're, why we have this in here.
Yep, and I, I can offer an explanation. In the two years and however many months that I've been in this particular role, through your leadership and through the mayor's office leadership, we've increased or have the propensity to increase our authorized strength by twenty-three commissioned officers. During that time period, we have not added any additional cruisers to the fleet. So we share cruisers between teams and shifts, it's not a one-for-one kind of program. And what this does is infuses six cruisers, mainly the school resource officers that were approved by this council for the Safe and Secure Kids Coalition because during the day is a high demand time for the cruisers that we share. Because during the day is a high demand time for the cruisers that we share. And these particular six school resource officers are going to be traversing from two different middle schools. So they're going to be assigned to do different middle schools. There is a necessity to have these additional cruisers to bolster what has been a very strong part of the Lincoln Police Department for the history that you're describing, Councilwoman.
And so, so when your, when your department wasn't, was doing the budget, it didn't budget for these vehicles?
That is correct. It is, when this is proposed to the mayor's office and it comes to you, there's lots of different needs that come forward. And we are in the business of adaptation, whether it's in operations or in support, which this would be in support. And we believe that it is a need, but during the initial phases, we have to come to some type of compromise and, and that's why it was not in the initial request.
Did you, did you make a plan because you knew about the officers and as far as, did you make any kind of a plan for moving forward for some every year? Or what did, what did the police department budget, what did you do in your budget?
For the additional cruisers is what you're referencing? We have, and that really comes at how many cruisers do we add? Do we lengthen the life of the particular cruiser in order to meet and accommodate the needs of the new authorized staffing? And if Pat Wenzel was here, he can describe to you this very complex balance between extending a fleet and getting into an issue that is in front of you today with Lincoln Fire and Rescue, where there isn't a continuing replacement schedule for the, the needs. And finding that balance, and that was really our plan going forward. I don't know if I'm doing an adequate job of.
Yeah, I think you are, and I just want you to know that, and I think I've expressed this to you before. I appreciate that the police department has done that because I think that's a lot of foresight. Do you have any kind of estimate of what that will add to ongoing costs? If we add six cruisers, what it'll add to your new li, your line item in years to come?
Well, a cruiser today, so today between the exercising with purchasing, the, the contracts, the cars themselves are approximately $27,000. The upfitting, the parts, the cameras, the mobile data term, the computers that go into the cars, that, that adds up in a hurry to $17,000. They're on a five to six-year replacement schedule. And so this is something that would be forecasted going forward. If we're fortunate enough to continue to replace officers at the rate that during my tenure, it is something that we consider and will look at going forward.
So going forward, if we look at new police officers, like roughly, what do you, what would you like to see us budget for how many cars per officer, that type of thing?
That is a great question Cindy, and one that I do not have the answer to without Pam Wenzel being here today.
Well, if you don't, I don't. Okay, thank you.
Tom Cassie, looks like he wants to. Do you want to add?
I mean, I did this for a lot of years and I always thought that we needed a ratio for every two officers we had, we need about one patrol car. And when we don't do that, when we don't add that, what happens is we simply keep cars that should have gone out of the fleet longer. And that makes Pat Wenzel very nervous because the cost of maintaining those vehicles goes up. So you can do a little bit of that, but when you're adding, you know, 12 police officers, it's really a good thing to be adding a few patrol cars to go along with that so that you don't get in that situation that the fire department finds itself in today.
Thank you.
That's all I have?
Yes, I would agree with you. I like what you think. Thank you, everyone. So Councilwoman Lamb, you have some suggestions for changes for the budget?
Wow, I'm up already? That's awesome. Okay, let me just pull up my sheet real quick. So I have made a number of recommendations and I think maybe I'll, I'll try to take the, maybe the easiest ones to address first. And I do want to say that I worked, I worked with my fellow councilman, Mr. Kemp and Mr. Christensen towards these. I just happened to be the one that put them all together because we thought they were more concise that way and because those guys just hardly ever write press releases. So, that's the answer. So the first thing that, that I would like to address is the transfer, the annual amount from the current CIP that's put aside for the 14th and Warlock project to citywide road projects. And basically, we've heard, you know, certainly the South Beltway has recently been funded. We heard from NDOT just a couple of weeks ago and the, and the governor that we're looking, we're looking at some kind of a launch of the project itself in 2019 with completion estimated at 2023, which is five years from now. Also, the NDOT, when they did their study on South Beltway, has anticipated that traffic at 14th and Warlock will actually decrease. And the traffic patterns very well may change because there's not an exit or entrance on the South Beltway planned currently for that location, although that could change in, in the next planning phase. But there is one for 27th. So I think that, given the fact that we do have a need for roads and new construction projects throughout the city and that this is one project, a single project, that is totally city-funded at $36 million, I think it would be wise of us to put it on hold, use that money where it's needed right now and wait to see what the traffic patterns actually end up being once the South, South Beltway is, is put in place. So that's the first one. Do you want me to talk about all of them? Okay, so the next one is, I reduce increases, fee increases to present, representing, to represent a cap of 3% per fee based on what it's currently being charged. And what we discussed was the, the fact that we have 50 to 70 fees being increased in the current budget. And some of them were 100% and others were maybe 50 or 78. Some of them a little bit smaller than that, but just cap them all at 3%. One of the things we've been talking about a lot as a council and as a city is affordable housing. And the reality is that when we increase a lot of fees for both homeowners and property owners who are landlords, those fees get passed on to renters. Those fees get passed on in the cases of, at the, at the landfill, those get passed on to landlords and han, and, and they don't, they don't bear those. They pass those on to renters. And so we've heard about affordable housing as far as new housing for people moving in, the workforce. And we've also heard about rental, new rental housing, a need for maybe some low-income rentals and so forth. And yet, as a city, even though we want to put in this budget $200,000 towards that issue at some point, we're actually causing the problem by increasing our fees greater than the rate of growth of the city. And so I would like us to see, see us rein it in, look at those fees and, not saying don't increase them at all, just saying cap it at 3%. And of course, that's kind of our idea and why we're here today, of course, is to discuss that because maybe it, it becomes what the city growth is, the 4% that were, was anticipated. But that's the idea. Let's get those fees, back them off and get them capped. And then the third was to eliminate the 2018, 19 raises. That's the first year of the biennium, to eliminate raises for any non-union employee who received a raise greater than 3% in 2017. And that, then the following year, the raise would be 3% of whatever their current wage is. The thought behind that, of course, is that when we looked at the biennium in 1617, we were given that there would be three, we were given figures that there would be 3% increases. And in fact, I was paying really close attention to those because I even brought forward how much I thought those increases were going to be. And then here we are, we're looking at the 1820 budget and come to find out that increases way greater than 3% were given in 2017. And they were well beyond what any of us knew about. We didn't know they'd even already been given. And so I get, I'm not saying let's take back those raises. I'm just saying at this point, let's eliminate raises for non-union employees who received a raise greater than 3% in 2017. And then finally, reducing the tax rate by half a cent. You know, last year, we raised it by half, half a cent. This year, we have seen an additional increase in commercial property values. We're looking, there's probably going to be another valuation at some point that's going to come into play during the first year of the, or first and second year of the biennium. You've seen, we've heard today already, our cash balances have grown. As the councilwoman said, we have more right now, more than we actually need to meet our minimum. The cash fund balances, that's money that we're not spending. It's time to be able to give some back to the good people of Lincoln, like the, the Lincoln Public Schools is going to do, like the Board of Commissioners is talking about doing. Even my understanding is the NRD may be giving reductions as well. And as a city, we should step up and, and help our citizens, our residents, see a reduction. And once again, property tax, we know that even if the rate doesn't increase, the cost to each homeowner and property owner is going to. And at this point in time, that gets passed on to renters. That makes lots more expensive. It makes housing more expensive in our city. And I think we just need to work towards that particular, particular feat. So I gave some things that I thought could be used. Basically, we're talking about 1.05 million based on the recent discussions we had in the inter-local and JPA, and that's my proposal. And I propose that some ways we may pay for it, and I'm not advocating that all these things take place because actually, one of the things I said was just eliminate general funded hires. And then another thing I had talked about was the percentage of the budgets were increasing their spending. But just in going through, just in going through the Parks and Rec Department, there's an incredible increase in, in funds of nearly five, over 500,000, about 588,000 from general fund minus, there's a partial endowment for the 470-acre Prairie Corridor, which is $12,480, which is for property outside of the city limits. And then also for labor for, I'm sorry, 12,480 and 60,240. And part of that is funded by an endowment, though it wasn't clear from our presentation how much that would be. So, so that shows me that we could easily, going through departments and, and picking either eliminating all, it would save us more and make up perhaps for some of the need for some of the fee increases just because one department is already over half a million dollars. Questions?
Questions?
Comments?
Generally agree with those.
In your, in what you sent out, you had talked about in the mayor's office, but I didn't hear you mention that. Is that?
Oh, I had asked, when I mentioned, I had sent my, the email to the mayor and I had invited the mayor to make other suggestions that might result in the half-cent tax, tax rate decrease.
But I was wondering about the mayor's staff in particular.
You're talking about salary?
Yeah.
So I, I talked about the mayor's staff?
I thought so.
I, what I talked about was non-union employees.
That's part of that.
Yes, that's part of that, yeah.
All right, okay. Who's the right person to respond?
I think I, I think I am, and I got to tell you, I feel pretty passionately about this. So forgive if it comes across a little stronger than I intend, but I would like to hand something out that I think helps with this situation because I cannot think of a single issue that we have talked about today that has been as badly discharacterized as the subject of raises in the city. First and foremost, the vast majority of the employees in this city of 2,100 people are determined by the state law known as comparability as they negotiate through the union contract. And point B on this will show you, the mayor only directly controls 18 salaries. The reason I bring this up is there was a big discussion about the assistant library director receiving a very big raise. And the truth of the matter is, that was a comparability issue that the mayor didn't decide. Comparability did through those union contracts. Second, on the issue of the mayor's staff and the directors, you'll see from your handout that of those 18 salaries that the mayor controls during, from the 1617 to 1718 budget year, which is the raises that have been, been in question, eight of those raises were 1.65% or less, okay? Majority were less than 2%. Four more were 3.15% or less. Five of those did exceed 3.15, and I will get into those in a moment, and one was a new employee. I handed you out a sheet that you've already been emailed that has been modified a little bit. And the modification that took place was I took out the percentages of those employees that the mayor does not control. Mr. Carey, Ms. Gonzalez are M-class employees. Ms. Quinzer, I think is E, she's excluded. The point is, we don't award those raises. Those are determined by step pay plans or by comparability. The remaining people, when you average out their salaries, came to 3.12, about what was in the budget book. Now, second, everyone has, has focused on those issues. No one has ever represented that those were actual raises. Just as no one has ever represented that the amount put aside for union contracts was actually what we were going to do. Those are placeholders that have to be there because the evaluations for the employees themselves do not take place in time enough to put an actual raise into the budget. It is impossible for me to tell you right now without doing the evaluation because those evaluations are merit-based. They are reflective of comparability and our attempts to achieve some sort of equity between positions that were competitive on a market basis. So that point is what's on number D. And I'm passing you out one more thing here.
So am I to understand then, in the next budget, even though it, it reflects only a 3% raise, and of course, in some instances, that amounts to about $4,000 or $5,000?
Yes.
Based on raises that have already been given?
No, the 3%, no, that's prospective raises.
No, the 3%, is, but it'll be 3% of, of the salary that rep, that represents raises that have already been given in 17. 2017 salaries.
3.12, yes, it represents that.
Okay, so.
And can, I, go ahead, I'll please you go ahead.
Sure, thank you. So I wanted to ask, does that mean that in the current budget that we're getting, then?
You mean, you mean, you mean the 18?
1820 biennium?
Yes.
That those numbers don't necessarily mean that these positions are only going to get a 3%?
No, they're a placeholder. I haven't done the merit-based evaluation under which we operate. We award scores and part of what they're given is based on that as well as comparability. And, and let me give you a very good example that should be close to home, that should, that you should all understand. In your own office, you set a budget for employee and during the biennium, you had the employee reclassified and that resulted in a fairly significant raise. That wasn't budgeted. It isn't any more of a secret raise than what we're being accused of on our end. It was, you had a placeholder, a need arose, you dealt with that need, and it led to more expending than you had budgeted for.
Except that we were told that when you do that, you have to wait 18 months for it to go into effect. So it's, so it's not been in the budget.
I'm sorry, that's, I, I don't think Mr. Daniel agrees with that. But regardless, we have been accused of giving secret raises because they did not meet what was budgeted. I think in addition to coming very close on the overall average to what we budgeted, we also are demonstrating that we're not behaving any differently than the council itself in dealing with these salaries. Now, final point, this has to be a matter of comparability. We have a lot of hardworking, very talented people in this organization that have to be compensated about the market rate or we might lose them. I handed you out a sheet that gives the midpoint of salaries for the department directors in the city of Omaha. The city attorney in Omaha has a 37%, we'd have to increase Jeff Patrick's salary 37% just to get to the midpoint. That is in the high end, that's the midpoint of those salaries. You see the rest of the sheet, 36%, 25%, 26%.
What do you mean by midpoint for like the city attorney of Omaha?
They have a range and the midpoint suggests that you have ascended to the middle of that range.
The mode. Do you know what he's making, what he or she is making?
As I recall, Mr. Patrick told me, it's well above that. Have you seen the room? Okay, it's well above that.
And are the, what year are these figures?
We picked, we picked when Doug McDaniel did the salary, and that's, that's the point. Can I finish what I was going to say and then you'll understand this a little bit better? At the bottom of your sheet, we did comparability surveys through the Human Resources Department to determine where our employees were at in terms of directors. Because we had several who said, look, I don't think my salary is competitive anymore. As you can see at the bottom, the survey that we did for the library director, it was based on data in 1617, about 1617 year. And that's when we did these surveys. The, the comparables of cities of like and similar work and size for library directors said that Pat Beach was undercompensated. The comparables of cities of like and similar work and size for library directors said that Pat Beach was undercompensated by almost 21%. We gave her a 4.65% raise. That's hardly breaking the bank for that big a gap. The public works director, who does an outstanding job for us and could be taken from us at any time, was nearly 10% behind her peers, and yet we gave her a 4.65% raise. What we found out from this process is that the vast majority of our directors are well under the market value, okay? We only chose to deal with a handful of those directors in order to try and make sure that we are being responsible in terms of the budget, which is why the amount that came out was 3.1%, which was very close to what we said would be the overall average. We think we need the flexibility within our department to be able to make those choices so we can keep a talented workforce in play, we can have talented people working on a budget and providing the kind of savings and leadership that results in a well-run city. And we have a well-run city. It is not a coincidence that Lincoln is so highly regarded nationally.
So I, I would make a couple comments. One is that we're about a third of the size of Omaha, so I don't know how, how that comparability. And we're not, by the way, required to meet comparability here.
But we are, but we're asking to meet the market.
With the non-union employees. So I'm not asking that we take the raises back. I, I know that the rank and file, the, the workers here in the city didn't receive 5.69 and 8% pay increases in 2017.
And we received 1.0 or 1.65, which several directors did.
Right, and that is unfortunate, but I don't know if what they got in 1016 was actually, you know, I don't know if that was actually what we budgeted for, because we didn't look back for that. So, but, but the point is that there aren't many employees that get a five and a half, four and a half, 8% increase in pay, especially based on a six-figure income. And there are even fewer people in our city that receive an increase of even 1.0, probably 1.65. I know that, that social security recipients don't get that. And so it is alarming that we're thinking 3% and that we're seeing raises like this. I'm not asking that we take back the raises, I get it, people are already being paid that. But I am saying that, that from a fiscally conservative position, it would save us. If we have enough money to give an 8% raise last year, we should give a little bit of money back to the taxpayer. And at this point in time, I'm just saying, hey, let's hold off raises in 1819 for anyone that got over that 3%. And maybe we look at a different percentage, but 3% is what I had in mind. And then in 1920, go ahead and give them the 3% raises, which would be based on basically what their pay is today.
It would undermine the market adjustments we tried to make, but that's fine, council certainly has that prerogative. As for people in community, yes, we're very grateful that they're willing to support the staff they do. But the bottom line here is, we're competing for talent with other communities. We aren't competing in, in that sphere. We're competing with the Omahas, with the Lovistas, with the Wichitas for talent. Keep in mind here, when we started to work on getting a new finance director, we weren't the only offer that finance director had. When we went out to market to get a new health director, Chabana is an up-and-coming star in, in the national health department world. She had more suitors than us. We have to be cognizant of what we're competing for. Now, I recognize what you're saying, but leadership, unfortunately, talented people do require us to spend money. And I would tell you, you're saying Omaha has, has a different size, but we're not a third of Omaha's size. We are not. In fact, the Douglas County Health Department is smaller than Lancaster County Health Department. So I don't think it's accurate just to look at Omaha and say, they're big, we're small, we should have small salaries. We have had salaries that have been under the market for quite some time. We made small adjustments to try to solve that, and that's where it sits.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I'm not saying because we should have smaller salaries because we're a smaller city. What goes with that, of course, is the level of work and the number of people managed. When you have a bigger city, obviously, you have more employees, so. Okay, I'm done.
Brandon's rethinking those other offers right about now.
Sorry.
Okay. Can I move to Carl? Carl, you were.
Yeah, I keep going, we've got 15 minutes.
Yeah, I was watching that too, right? Did you have questions?
Well, I guess, yeah, the main question, I mean, it's like the math. In order to entertain sort of a, a decrease in the tax rate, sort of the numbers need to add up. And I was curious if you have the cost of savings that would come from the salary freeze?
About $25,000 in 1920 and $30,000 in 1819.
And the other items, like what, what the impacts to those budgets that were capped? What kind of savings it achieves and what the impact to the city services and delivery would be? Whether or not that has effect on our ability to serve new subdivisions and grow the city at the edge? I mean, I'd like to understand the.
Sure.
Impact, because these are very like high-level conceptual plans without a lot of math accompanying them.
Right, so the, a city's, a city's growth should pay for itself. And the city certainly has grown at a rate that can pay for itself. And we're told it's going to grow at 4.4% in 1819, that's the anticipation, and 4.5% in, I'm sorry, 4% in 1819, 4.5% in 1920. But the expenditures, the amount that's been increased in spending in this particular budget is 6%. So my proposal is, obviously, there are a lot of departments. And my proposal for reducing and eliminating hires that were not, that are now new general fund hires would certainly save that million point five and perhaps more. So I think that I want to give the department some discretion on that. This is obviously a suggestion, but I think that could easily manage the savings. And we're just talking about new FTEs would more than supply the, the 1.05 million dollars. And I think that they could balance it at that. In other words, pick and choose, make, make their decisions based on balancing it with the 1.05 million dollar cut, or thereabouts. That's what we were told last year, so.
I'd love to hear what the math is from the finance director, any departments who could give us a sense of, like in reality, what does this mean in terms of the impact to the public? Because really, this is, this is very tough to decipher. And, you know, growth isn't going to pay for a second water source for the city. It isn't going to pay to cut down the Emerald, to cut down our ash trees. I mean, we, we have a lot of significant challenges that we are dealing with. And while we are in good shape as a city, and we're getting recognized for our success as an innovation hub, as part of the Silicon Prairie, for our, a great place to work. Those things didn't just happen organically. There've been a lot of people working really hard to plan carefully and administer our limited resources carefully. So I want to make sure that if something like this was proposed, we understand the impact.
And I, I was trying to go through today and do some preliminary calculations on potential impacts. For the non-union employees, now this just represents department heads and mayoral appointees. So for those that went over 3%, if you cut out that raise within 1819, that saves approximately $20,000. And then in 1920, that carries forward to about $17,000. Now, that doesn't include, there's about, I believe I'm right, 70 people that are not represented by a union outside of the directors and the mayor's appointees. So I'd have to go back and do some analysis on that as well.
171,000.
What's that?
171,000.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 171,000?
Excuse, what is that figure? The people made excess of 3%?
No, no, that would be 2.5% that was budgeted for the E's, W's, X's.
Okay, it's 171,000?
Yes.
So there wouldn't be 171,000 additional available dollars if they were at 2.5%? Because isn't the proposal at 3%? I want to make sure we're clear.
That would be a zero increase for those people.
And sure, I guess what we're trying to figure out is, are we realizing any dollars at 3% with that group? And I'm, I'm hearing you say no.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then keep moving down the list there. Any departments except public safety that have a proposed budget greater than 4%? I just, really quick, did an analysis on the general fund. So excluded public safety. If that was the case, you would save about 1.8 million in 1819, and then 2.5 million in 1920. Now, that also includes, includes city unassigned, which was basically where all the benefits are paid for from employees. So there would have to be some type of exceptions made for police and fire within that number as well, because the benefits come out of there.
1.8 million in 1819 and 2.5 in 1920?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry, that's for the one, if you went back to departments that have gone over the 4% and dialed it back to 4%?
Strictly for the general fund.
Strictly general fund spending?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it is worth pointing out that when you talked about the 6%, a very big part of that percentage was the additional funding we put in place for the 12 police officers, the $2 million approximately we put in place for the firefighters and firefighter overtime for new stations. It takes about high 3, 4, I think we say 4% growth in the general fund just to provide and maintain current services because of comparability, because the cost of living increases, because of just things, the cost of gas, et cetera, so forth. So the point is that beyond the public safety, we haven't gone much beyond what it costs to maintain year-to-year service.
A quick question on this, in this, we are expecting, we've been told by the assessor's office that we will see another residential revaluation this, the end of this year, beginning of next year. Have we projected anything on that?
That was included in the second year, so basically, I think, from a tax growth perspective, we're looking at a 4.45 in the second year, and the first year, a 4% growth.
I'm sorry, I'm going to dive into a question. I have talked with people in the community, and everyone is, all the builders, developers are experiencing cost increase because of changes in our economy. Have that been factored in? The cost of doing business in the private sector is going up, is the cost of doing business in the public sector in the city going up? And have you factored any of that in?
Well, I want to say one thing, particularly with councilwoman Lam's proposal to cap fees, that's exactly what we're trying to do, and particularly because of the construction cost increases. We are using historical numbers right now, and they run between, are actually close to 6%, 5% to 6% on construction cost increases. So that's where our rates are actually based upon. And we want to cap them there and make them reasonable so people can understand that that's where they're going to stay. Basically, we're not going to increase them more than that. I also want to comment on councilwoman Gaylor Baird's comment about our second source of water fund. It certainly would impact this because we cannot use bond dollars. We can't, we can't get debt and put bond dollars in a, in a pocket somewhere and hold it for 20 years before we start building something for the Missouri River plant, if we're going there. This, this money and this rate setting that we're doing now would eliminate us putting away that money. We could not afford to do that in our water fund. And rates are cumulative over time. And if you look at what our master plan projected for having enough money on hand to be able to bond for a project of that magnitude, it would be a 5% rate increase annually. So that's where we're capping our water. Let me, let me speak, let me speak about wastewater real quickly, too. It's very critical in wastewater, we have a tremendous amount of growth happening in the wastewater area. That's a lot of upfront expenditure that we have to do because of the large trunk lines that we have to put in. So we're going to be leveraging that 5% rate revenue by issuing revenue bonds to the maximum extent possible. If we go to 3%, we can't borrow the money. And that would take $10 million off of our capital improvement program for the next two years. So in the next two years, to accommodate that loss, probably it would be the growth projects that would go. We still have to meet our regulatory obligations, and those projects would stay on the table, as well as anything that would maintain our system so that we didn't have backups in the system. So, you know, we're asking for 11 million in this next budget for the Stevens Creek project. And that would probably be the one that would be subject to being cut.
I have a question. We're almost out of time, I just want to make an overall observations about what we're talking about today. First of all, we've got, we're talking about spending some excess funds out of the general fund. And the availability of these funds lends credence to the idea that we have excess funds that could partially be used to reduce the levy rate. You can't have it both ways. Either you got excess funds, or you don't have excess funds. If you have them, they could be used to reduce the levy if we decide we want to. So we have here basically two philosophically divergent proposals. But I believe they are not necessarily mutually exclusive. And I think there, a compromise that blends aspects of both these proposals is possible.
I'm glad you think that, and I agree that they're not mutually exclusive. But I don't think it's right to, to represent that having a growth in the cash balance could be funding a tax cut because it's one-time money. It's not an ongoing income stream. And if you could explain again what the appropriate uses of cash reserve are so that we all understand how limited the uses are, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, so just like I mentioned earlier, I think cash reserves for debt reduction, one-time expenditures, and one-time expenditures that could reduce the operating expenses, funding outstanding liabilities like pension obligations or other post-employment benefits, setting up funds for risk reserve-type things like self-insurance, and, or setting aside for future plan use.
I think, I think we've seen that there are funds that we could access that could give us long-term, because there are some proposals in your, your proposal that were long-term ongoing funds expenditures as well. So I think we have some work to do, and we can make some compromises. And we can make aspects of both of these plans happen if we just work together.
But keynote separate from property tax rate.
But in the end, all money is fungible, in the end.
I'm worried about increased costs in the future. I would, so this was our presentation conversation. We will talk about this again on Monday. What is our next step? This is a new process for me.
Okay, so next step, Monday, meeting at noon. And so at that time, that's the time that we have set aside to do preliminary votes on the proposals that have been set out for today. From there, share your schedule from there.
I do have the old schedule, it's not updated for the noon time.
Sorry about that, that was my mistake, because I based the schedule on last biennium, where the council met at 5:30 at night.
Yep.
The meeting was at 3, and I just, that was my bad, sorry about that.
So on the 16th, you have the preliminary vote. From there, on the 24th, we have to publish the summary of the budget within the paper. And then that starts, the next step is kind of July 30th, which is the public hearing for the budget. So that'll start at 2:30, and it's set to conclude at 10:30. Friday, August 3rd is the next date, which is when the proposed final changes to the mayor's recommended budget must be submitted to the, for the entire council. So that's another 3:00 PM deadline for submittal. If you can submit that to everybody, CCS on that, and then we'll make sure and post them online. Then August 6th, there's a discussion on those proposed final changes. August 8th, which is Wednesday, you have a vote on those. We'll have a meeting at 3 o'clock that day. And then you'll have the final adoption is set for August 20th.
Is there another meeting after August 20?
There is a meeting in September that, that is to set the taxes levy.
So I mean, another council meeting after August 20?
We don't have another meeting scheduled to.
That's where he's ringing from, isn't it?
It's my autograph.
There, there might be a timing, because you have to have a budget adopted five days prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Yep.
And I think we'd have to look and see if that, the Monday meeting would meet that obligation or not.
I guess my, my observation is, this is, if this is for future biennial budgets, it sure would be nice to be able to have our final vote a week ahead of the final, final deadline.
The final, final?
I think it is, I think we did that, though, because the, August 27th is five days before September 1st.
It is, so there is another meeting available.
We built, we built a week.
That's what I thought we had done, so I wasn't hearing that.
Is, when's the final vote?
August 20th.
August 20th.
Okay.
So as long as we have a cushion there, I feel more comfortable. I expect it to be concluded on the 20th, but.
Okay, and can I just ask a question about what are the expectations for Monday's vote?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we take, are we looking at each proposal?
Line by line.
Line by line?
Department line by line or?
Are we looking at, and, and then we're voting on a proposal and then having? I guess I'm wondering is if there, do we need to have some kind of a, a resolution? Or we're just? Or we're just, we're voting on the proposal, like, do we look at what's matching in, in Lyrian's, um, proposal, for instance? If we want to eliminate the, um, the taking away from the city council budget, do, do we match it up with something else in order, and then vote on the whole proposal, or...
Or do you give us a different budget?
Yeah. What's envisioned?
I think you would want to do a kind of proposal by proposal, so if you have one that's specifically for the council, that you vote on that one, then you have KNO, and then you have the balance, and then you move over to your proposals and move line by line.
So here's the other question, though, as part of this, I would hope that between now and Monday when we do this, we might be able to find some compromises and change some things before we vote on them. That's possible, isn't it?
Is, okay, but some of these actually require policy changes, so I don't think you can go through these line by line without some sort of resolution. Is Jeff around?
Yes.
I mean, aren't, aren't some of these require language changes as well?
They do, but, but I think at this stage, you can all, you can think of them more as concepts, and there'll be some interaction. I mean, you're really, what you're doing as a council, as a body, is giving direction to the finance department through your votes. That doesn't mean there will be some follow-up questions. So the drafting doesn't have to be done on Monday.
Right.
Concepts, you want the concepts to make sense. So Nick Ceney was talking about balancing, you do want to think through, so it's not all spending money and then worrying about finding money later. You want to have that balance done on the concepts that you vote on on Monday.
I guess my point is, we don't have to vote on Monday on exactly what was discussed today.
Right. Okay.
On Monday, we're voting on something that can be public, put out to the public for review.
Just by idea?
Public hearing.
The idea of it, right? Of each, and then as far as the documentation, the law department and the finance department gets together on that later, that's not gonna be in front of us Monday to vote on.
We may need to count, make some calculations based on any motions that pass, but in prior years, essentially, uh, council people, I think our starting point would be your proposal and Lyrian's proposal, and any council person could make a motion. Yes.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I believe, I think we need the, the calculations. That's why I'm saying that you wouldn't have the calculations, I'm saying that we don't have to have it in final form.
Right.
Okay.
We've exhausted our time. This was, this was fun, not a lot of fun, but still fun. And I look forward to continuous conversation on Monday. Thank you all for coming.
So you did a fabulous job, it's 5:01.
Meeting done.
It is 5:01.